Next order of business is to approve the order of the agenda that has been distributed and in your packet.
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Anderson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. Not a motion and a second to approve the agenda as distributed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item E is approval of the minutes of June 16th, 2025.
Move to approve.
Commissioner Olson moves to approve the minutes of June 16th, 2025, as distributed.
Second.
Is there a second? Commissioner Zandell, seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F is the building permits. Again, they have been distributed and are in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Jorgensen moves to approve the building permits as distributed. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We move on to the consent agenda. This evening, we have items A through G on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zandell moves to approve the consent agenda as distributed, items A through G.
Second.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now move into the regular agenda. First order of business on the regular agenda is public comment. Madam Secretary, my records show we have three signed up for public comment. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. We're going to call on the residents as we receive these. The first one is Pastor Sue Kosterman. Pastor Sue. Next one is Mr. David Withy. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Dave Withy, 24, 21, McLeod Drive East. Appreciate all that you do and appreciate opportunities to speak to you. This weekend, we met some of our neighbors we hadn't met before. So as we were chatting, you know, they live closer to where the multi-use path to nowhere is going to be put in. And we were chatting about it. A question came up, and I thought, who better to ask than you? That is, when people who are not residents, when the path, multi-use path to nowhere is finished, and it's easier to get to the river, and when non-residents decide to move in with their tents and their shopping carts and their other possessions, what happens? Now, who do we call? Our neighbors have already encouraged or discouraged potential residents by the river to perhaps go someplace else, but that's without the path even being completed. So I'm sure that some has already figured out how to handle this, but it'd be nice that the public would know how to do it also. Much can appreciate all you do. I know the hours I put in just getting ready for meetings, and I know you put in a lot more in. Your efforts appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Withy. The next person that has signed up is Father Gary Luton. Good evening, Father.
Good evening. Probably not too often it gets you to see a priest in the chambers, but anyway. My darlings and council members, I am Father Gary Luton from Blessed Sacrament Church in West Fargo. Pastor Sue was supposed to be here, but she didn't make it, from Faith Journey Lutheran. We're here to ask the city of West Fargo to reinstate the local access broadcasting of our respective parish worship services on Sunday mornings. For the past several months, since the broadcasts have stopped, we have received a number of complaints from parishioners desiring to have our services shown again on local access. We have told them that the problem is not on our end, but with the city. The city of West Fargo has told us that their broadcast capabilities need to be updated, but they have no plans to do so. I have had approximately 20 calls from people explaining their desire to see those services on local access once again. One may say there are other services they can watch on other channels, but they have a desire to remain in contact with their local parishes. One may also say that they have, that they can watch our services on other forms of media, and they can. But a number of these people are elderly and have only one cable access and have difficulty with other forms of media. Another parish member remarked that though the city is, no longer has this available, the city taxes have not gone down. We ask that you please reconsider and once again broadcast our parish services. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. This concludes the public comment portion. We now move into the public hearings. The records show that we have no public hearings this evening, so we move on to item number three. Item number three is the first reading of ordinance 1259, Food Establishments. Mr. Grant J. Larson, Director of Environmental Health for the Fargo Public Health, will have a discussion with us. Good evening, Grant, and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Commissioner. I'm here to explain, this ordinance specifically deals with food establishments in West Fargo. What happens is when we change ordinances in Fargo, we want to make sure that we uniformly regulate, as we do in licensing in West Fargo. And so we updated or revised the ordinances, or this ordinance in Fargo, went through their process, and after that one gets buttoned up and signed by the mayor, then what we do is, in turn, then I worked with Ms. Schmidt and our attorney to get it updated, the same exact revisions that we want to be implemented in West Fargo. So there again, we have uniform regulation in West Fargo, the same ordinance, just mirrors Fargo and West Fargo, mirror each other. And these are mostly language revisions. It's been a while since we cleaned it up, but they're mostly language revisions, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mr. Larson? Commissioners?
I move we review the first reading.
We have a motion to approve the first reading. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. I have a motion from Commissioner Zandell, a second, from Commissioner Olson. Is there any discussion? I'd call on Ms. Schmidt. You've reviewed this, everything?
Yes, I have.
Okay, very good. Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you for your time, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr.
This is the approval of the first reading of ordinance 1259. Number four is public comment policy. We're going to call on Rachel Richard Lordeman, Manager of Public Affairs for the city of West Fargo. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Commissioners. I have here for your approval a formal public comment policy. In this past legislative session, there was a bill passed that requires public comment at every regular meeting of the governing board, which would include the city commission. As you know, we already have a public comment period that we just went through a few minutes ago, and that was approved in May of 2023. So we've had this procedure, but to make sure we're complying with this legislation, we need to adopt this as a formal policy. So what you have is essentially our procedures that we've had in place with only a couple minor changes. These have been reviewed by our city attorney. The only changes to the procedure as we shift into a policy is that we are adding a requirement that the topic of, that those who wish to speak have to speak on a topic on that meeting's agenda or the previous meeting's agenda. This comes from the discussions within the legislature that the public should have a right to know what will be covered at a city commission meeting, meaning that what will be discussed during the public comment period should be on that meeting's agenda, or they can know it's a follow-up from a previous meeting's agenda. The other thing that we are adding, and this is on the procedure side, is that we are adding the option for speakers who are not West Fargo residents to note if they're speaking on behalf of a business, an organization, or another property tax-paying entity. Other than that, everything will stay the same, as far as the time limit, the amount of speakers allowed, et cetera. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for Rachel? Commissioner Zandell?
I just have two, whoop, I just turned that. I just have two quick questions. My first question was, have we ever had more than 12 speakers attempt to speak at public comment? Not to my knowledge.
We have not, no.
Okay, I didn't think so. And then my other question, or I guess more of a comment, in section number two, we talk about saying that people have to register in advance. It might help to clarify, register in advance by when? I know we have that on our policy.
Yes, that is, oh, sorry, Commissioner, that is included in the policy. You have to be registered by noon the day of the meeting.
Which one?
Three.
Yes, that is in section three.
Oh, my gosh. I'm sorry.
Which is our current policy as well, our current procedure as well.
That's all I have. Thank you, Rachel.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. And this is an actual item.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Jorgensen moves to approve the public policy comment. Public comment policy as presented this evening, is there a second, please?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the public comment policy as distributed and in the packet. Is there any discussion?
One question.
Please.
In the staff report, it says that the policy must be adopted before August 1st. So if we approve this tonight, does it go into effect immediately? So the next meeting, the public comment policy will have to be followed then?
Yeah, you could make it effective after this meeting. The August 1st deadline is from the legislation.
The legislative intent was that it has to be enacted by August 1st. So if we're ahead of that, we can be, that's fine.
So, okay.
Good question.
Just want to make sure that the next comment period we have, or our next, I don't know the date, but we'll have to follow these new rules then.
Correct.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of a 750, I jumped ahead again, I apologize. Item number five, 825-15, Section 26, T140N, R550W, a request for a conditional use permit for a composting facility in an A zoning district. We're going to call on Mr. Aaron Nelson, our Director of Planning and Zoning. Good evening and welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon, President Dardis and Commissioners. So item five is a request for a conditional use permit to allow an enclosed composting business within the A agricultural zoning district. This request comes to you with recommendation for approval with conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a couple of representatives from the applicant here with us tonight, if you have any questions for the applicant as well. So the subject property is located within the city's extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction on roughly a four-acre farmstead at 2502 26th Street Northwest, which is about a mile northwest of the city's sewage lagoons. Just to give you kind of a sense of where this is located, we've got a map up in front of you here as well. In summary, the applicant intends to temporarily operate a private, small-scale food waste composting facility at the subject property. The facility would include two fully enclosed rotary composting drums, and food waste would be collected from local restaurants, homes, and businesses, and be transferred to the subject property by the applicant as the operator of this facility. And while large-scale, open-air composting facilities would likely present a few different challenges relating to various nuisances, these issues are much less of a concern for the proposed small-scale, fully enclosed facility that is proposed by the applicant. Also included in your packet here are a description of the operation, as well as some images, just to give you a sense of what these composting drums look like. So in this instance here, for this request, they're basically requesting two of these large-scale, or excuse me, large drums that would, food waste would go into one end, they rotate, and over a roughly, I think, four to six-week period, composting takes place within the enclosed container, and then the rendered compost comes out the opposite So in terms of nuisances, the enclosed facility takes care of a lot of what those nuisances that are typically associated with open-air, large-scale facilities. However, if there were to be major changes to how the facility operates, or expansion to the facility over time, this could result in some increased potential for nuisances to adjacent properties. Additionally, while this area is currently agricultural in nature, this area will likely be incorporated into the city at some point in the future, which could present some future land use compatibility issues as this area urbanizes. So as such, it's recommended that the use be temporary in nature, and that conditions be placed on the approval of the CUP in order to ensure the facility operates in a manner consistent with the applicant's description here in the packet. A public hearing was held on this item on June 10th, 2025, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, at which an area resident did speak in opposition to the application. The resident stated that they also represented the large farm field owner, who was not present at the meeting, but who had also submitted and written comments. A copy of that letter is also included in your packet here tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission ultimately voted six to one, recommending approval of the CUP, with the 10 conditions outlined in the meeting packet, which I can read if you'd like, but in summary, the conditions are mostly saying that, you know, there's no more than two of these drums, everything will be enclosed, everything will be operated in accordance with how the application is presented here tonight. The main recommendation, or the main criteria, I should say, is that the CUP shall automatically expire five years from the date of final approval, or upon annexation of the property into the city, whichever occurs first. So this is intended to be a temporary operation for no more than a five-year period here. The applicant received a private grant, and so they got some funding for these two drums. The idea is to kind of test the concept here, get it to grow, and then ideally, if this takes off, they can find a more appropriate location, presumably in an industrial zoning district. So with those conditions, as outlined in the staff report here, staff finds the application to be consistent with city plans and ordinances, and the request in front of you here tonight is to approve the conditional use permit with those 10 conditions, along with the accompanying CUP agreement, which is included in your packet here as well. So with that, the applicant here is present. Should you have any questions for the applicant? Otherwise, I can certainly answer any questions you have for staff.
Commissioner Jorgensen?
I think, I got a few questions about the layout and stuff. So can you come up, please?
Good evening.
Please state your name.
My name is Bridger Scraper. I'm one of the co-owners of Prairie Compost.
I'm Hayden Thompson. I'm the other co-owner of Prairie Compost.
Good evening and welcome. Mr. Jorgensen?
So in your verbiage, it says at a high temperature. What is the fuel? Is it propane, or is it?
So the process of composting in the vessel system, it heats up just by adding the organic nitrogen material, which is just the food waste, and then adding in a carbon amendment, which is just like sawdust or wood chips. And then in the process of composting, it heats up naturally by itself and gets to about 140, 150 degrees.
Okay. Has the fire marshal been involved in the placement of this at all?
So following city approval, sorry about that, part of the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality permit application will be meetings with the fire department to kind of figure out the plan for that whole thing. There isn't any additional fuel source added to those composters. Like Hayden mentioned, it is the microbial activity in there that heats it up.
And what was the degree again you said it gets up to?
150 degrees at the top.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, additional questions for these gentlemen? I have a question for, with regard to the permit, is it, it's a two-year permit from the state? Are you, and in reading what the planning and zoning did, are we going to, are we going to limit this to a two-year? Is that what you're requesting this evening? Mr. Nelson?
No, the request is part of the conditional use permit would be to include a condition that the approval of the CUP basically sunsets after five years. So the conditional use permit would be for a five-year period. The, the Department of, North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality is another permit application that's required for this type of facility that the applicant is also working through. My understanding is that a requirement of that process is that the zoning be, all their zoning approvals be approved ahead of time. And please correct me if I'm wrong there.
Yep.
So the actions we're taking this evening does not allow them to expand this in any way?
Correct. It would be, what you see in the packet is what they'd be allowed to do as part of that CUP.
Thank you. Commissioner Olson?
So when does the five-year period start? Once they get their permit from the North Dakota EQ, or is it from tonight if we approve this?
From tonight if you approve it.
Anyone else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Move, we approve.
Commissioner Olson moves that we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Jorgensen, seconds. I have a motion and a second regarding to the conditional use permit for a composting facility in an A zoning district as presented by planning and zoning. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the issuance and the sale of $750,000 worth of water treatment improvement warrant, Series 2025. Katie Schmidt, City Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dardis, and Commissioners. This is a resolution authorizing the sale of bonds to the North Dakota Public Finance Authority in the amount of $750,000 for financing costs in Improvement District 3006, which is the Westwood addition. You see, these are drawdown funds, so you'll pull the funds as necessary. It's a 31-year maturity payback for the bonds. The interest rate on the bonds is 1.5%, and then you have a half percent admin fee, so it's a 2% interest. So it's really good, it's really good dollars for that. I'm available if anyone has any questions.
Questions for Ms. Schmidt?
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Zandell moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Anderson, seconds. I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and the sale of $750,000 worth of water treatment improvement warrant, Series 2025. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We move on. We are now on item number seven, Improvement District Number 2294, 6th Street and 23rd Avenue East, Intersection Improvements. Mr. Dan Hanson, a Senior Director of Community and Development, will be presenting. The purpose of the discussion is to conduct a determination of protests and sufficiency and approve an associated resolution.
Thank you, Commissioner, President, and Commissioners. At the May 19th commission meeting, we passed a resolution necessity, excuse me, for this project. So all of the properties that are within the Improvement District were sent a mailing, alerting them to the project and instructing them how they can file a written protest against the adoption of the resolution. Basically, they would be able to protest against the creation of the Improvement District that was created to help fund this project. And when, at the time that I was putting the packet together, we had only received two written protests, and those were emailed, and I have not, I checked this afternoon, and there was no further written protests received. So the only protests that we have received are two. The combination of those two do not constitute more than 50% of the property within the Improvement District. So the Improvement District is able to move forward. In your packet is the affidavit of publication, and again, the mailing that went out, along with a map of the objecting properties. And tonight, what we would be looking for is to approve the resolution of insufficient protests, allowing the project to move forward as an Improvement District. With that, I entertain questions.
Questions for Mr. Hanson? Will we approve? Commissioner Olson moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, seconds. Been moved and seconded to approve the Improvement District 2294, that the protests are insufficient, and to approve the associated resolution as in the packet. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item number eight, sanitary sewage spot repairs. Again, we call on Mr. Hanson, Senior Director of Community and Development. Purpose of this discussion is to create a project number 1352 and direct the engineer to prepare an engineer's report. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Commissioner Dardis and Commissioners. This is a new project in front of you. If you recall, we are just in the tail end of finishing up a project where we were redoing a lot of the rear yards and back alley sanitary sewer that was failing, and now we've turned our attention towards the sanitary sewer that we have underneath our streets that is vitrified clay tile pipe, basically. And there is a map in the, in the packet here. It's kind of a garbled mess, it looks like a 90-day weather map, but for the most part, the spot repairs where you see in yellow, those are high-risk, and in red are extreme risk. This has been identified in the core area study that was recently completed. This project ranked as the fifth-highest project. The algorithm that the consultant used to basically triage the projects in that study, it really focused on sanitary sewer being one of the highest-ranked criteria, because any type of a failure in this system could potentially lead to backups into residents' basements. So what we're looking to do is just to create the project and to direct the engineer to prepare an engineer's report. This map has been provided to Public Works, and Public Works is vetting the map and also taking a look to see if there are other areas that are, that weren't included based off of televising and things of that nature. And eventually, when Public Works and the consultant have been able to get together and solidify the correct map that we want to proceed with those improvements, then they would produce the feasibility study, which we would use to create the engineer's report and bring that back in front of the commission. So tonight, I would just ask that we create the project number 1352, direct the engineer to prepare an engineer's report, and for the record, there are no assessments intended to be assessed with, along with this project, and the funds would come out of capital improvement sales tax funds.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Questions? Commissioner Olson?
On your map, you've got the yellow areas, which are proposed spots, you've got the red ones, which is critical, but unless I'm colorblind, there's a green one, too, that, and so what was that?
The green ones are ones that we've been improving. So those are, those are not included in this, in this study.
Oh, okay. I was just curious if there was something missing on there, why the green, what the black outline was, was up there.
Yep, and those, this is a map that was in the core area study, and we hadn't proceeded with the rear yard improvements yet, so it's just not included on the legend for this one. Sorry for the confusion.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right.
Will we approve?
Commissioner Olson moves to create project number 1352 and to direct the engineer to prepare, to prepare an engineer's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Zandell, seconds. I have a motion and a second for creating project number 1352. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you.
Item number nine, project number 9054, Utility Fiber Project. Citywide, call on Jerry Wallace, the city engineer. Purpose of this discussion is to approve a task order with Bolton and Mink for inspection and assistance. Mr. Wallace, good evening and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, President, and Commissioners. Try to be brief and respectful of your time tonight, but I'm before you, looking to approve a task order with Bolton and Mink for inspection and assistance on private utility work. Basically, the background behind this is for several years now, there've been private utility companies interested in coming into the city that will be providing services that we classify as fiber directly to the home, extremely high-speed internet services. We have two companies that are interested right now. One, we have agreements in place with that could start drawing permits very quickly. Another one that we're in the process of developing those similar agreements and, you know... you know, it sounds as though they're very interested in potentially coming in yet this year and conducting similar work. Excuse me. We anticipate a lot of this work to be proceeding over the next three to four years as these companies build out various swaths of the city. And unfortunately, the right-of-way staff and damage prevention personnel that we have with the city here just would be overwhelmed by, you know, being able to, you know, babysit, for lack of a better term, a lot of this work, and that's, I guess, why we're bringing this to you tonight. We RFP'd with several engineering consultants that we have master service agreements with. Ultimately, we looked at a few different things, like cost, local knowledge, experience with this type of construction inspection, because it is very unique. Ultimately, we did end up, it was a tough decision, but we ended up going with Bolton and Mink as far as what the selection group decided. And like I said previously, I guess the recommendation we're looking here for tonight is approving the task order with Bolton and Mink for the private fiber optic installation inspection assistance, and with that, I'm available for any of your questions.
Mr. Wallace, would you state the dollar amount, please?
The dollar amount?
Just for the public's knowledge, please.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner, President. The current estimate for the services that would be provided is for $246,600. Now, it's important to note that per our agreements with these utility companies, these are pass-through costs that the city will be reimbursed for, so effectively, it nets to a zero. A very good question. Thank you.
Just what I wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions for Mr. Wallace on this project?
No, he just clarified it.
Will we approve?
Commissioner Olson moves to approve project number 9054, which is approve a task order with Bolton and Mink for inspection and assistance on utility fiber.
Second.
Second. Commissioner Jorgensen, seconds. Thank you. A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Item number 10. We call on our city administrator for a city administrator's report, Mr. Dustin Scott. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner, President, Dardis, and Commissioners. Just a couple of updates. I'll be brief. First of all, I hope you all had a fun and safe Independence Day and weekend. And relatedly, my first update here is fireworks. I was informed today that from July 3, so Thursday until today, we've had about 45 calls for service. Three of those were related to dumpster fires, and as far as I'm aware, there have been no injuries, no serious happenings to report on. Is that correct, Assistant Chief? Yep. So relatively safe weekend. So any questions on that before I move on? Good. And the last update I have for you is the budget. We're getting, we're getting near the end. Willie, Sheila, Nick, and team have been hard at work compiling everything. We hope to have all of the materials ready this week. We are going to share updates with department heads on Wednesday, and hopefully by the end of the week finalize all of our materials, and I will look to schedule individual review meetings with, with each commissioner next week ahead of our public meeting on July 21. So I think we are landing in a very good spot, but still some work to do here this week and get together with you guys next week. Any questions on the budget? And that's all I have for you, so any other questions I can, I can help with.
Anything for Mr. Scott this evening?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Correspondence has been distributed to all you commissioners. Does any commissioner have a non-agenda item they'd like to discuss this evening? Any department head? All right. With that, Commissioner Jorgensen?
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Anderson?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say by saying aye.
Aye.